We're meeting to order. May I have any motion, please?
So move.
Second. Second. The roll call, Mrs. Slump.
Dr. Cortalino.
Here.
Mr. Daughtry.
Here.
Dr. Modra.
Here.
Mr. Morella. Mr. O'Brien.
Here.
Mr. Rappaport.
Here.
Ms. Zuckerman.
Here.
Mr. Palmer.
Here.
Mr. Grau.
Here.
Mr. Ammer.
Here.
Mr. Ho Hill.
Here.
Flags look good. She's applying over there.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to its republic, which stands on a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, gentlemen, and Mrs. Slump. The New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advanced knowledge of and to attend meetings at public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provision of the Act, the Montville Township Board of Education provided a notice of this meeting, which included the time, date, and location that was posted at the Montville Township Municipal Building, all Montville Township Public Schools, the Montville Public Library, the Montville Township Board of Education Office Building, the district website, and advertised in the Daily Record, the board's official newspaper, on May 31, 2019.
Thank you very much. Gentlemen, who would like to go first?
I'll go.
Okay, let go. Well, somebody go first. No.
So, the baseball team concluded their season with a loss in the state sectional finals last Friday against Roxbury. The Mustangs shook all Morris County as underdogs who made it all the way to the finals. A huge congratulations to all the players and a special congratulations to first-year coach Ian Schwindell. The boys' lacrosse team concluded their season with a loss in the state sectional quarterfinals. An exceptional season nonetheless, as multiple records were broken by the team and by individual players. Congratulations to Coach Dibantia and all his athletes. The girls' lacrosse season ended some time ago, but they gave out individual awards. One in particular was the Most Valuable Player of the Year Award to Gwen Chopia. With all the sports coming to an end, Morris County will be giving out their Player of the Years and settle into teams soon. With sports in Montville closing, there's a senior sports banquet to honor all the athletes on their hard work and dedications throughout their high school careers.
Okay, so I'm going off what Malik said. So, pretty much all of our sports have come to a conclusion, and that's already starting. Our underclassmen are preparing for fall sports next year, and watching that happen to me is kind of emotional, you know, because I used to be a fall athlete, and now it's over, and I'm not preparing for anything anymore. Also, we are currently 16 days away from graduation. Not, not school days, but overall days. And we just recently had our senior prom, which was a really great time. And a lot of people got involved in dance and made the best night out of everything. And it was just a great night overall. Thank you, Dr. Roth for coming out Thursday. And the senior dessert is this Thursday, which should be a lot of fun considering to get out of class in the morning to eat desserts. Yeah, that's everybody's kind of party. The senior picnic is also approaching very fast, which really pushes the fact that we are graduating soon. Senior awards are also this Thursday, which is even more senior events for you guys to hear about. Also, most elementary schools are having their field days this Friday, and I get to get out of class yet again to go and volunteer and help out what they need. And then that D-Day thing I told you guys about last time, like Mr. McManus is having like a simulation kind of thing of what it was like fighting in World War II. That got moved to Friday because of weather stuff. And, yeah, that's pretty much it.
Thank you very much. It's unfortunate because you start off with the baseball team lost, and usually when you get to the county or state tournament, unless you go all the way and they're still playing, there has to be a team that loses. But the both team, all the teams had a very successful, really special season, and I know the support of the rest of you guys for all of the team, you're very much appreciated. And I'm glad you had a good time with the prom. Senior awards, I guess, are Thursday.
Yeah.
And then next Monday is the sports banquet. So, hope to see some of you there. Do we have any other questions for our gentlemen?
I just want to thank them for their service to the Board of Education. Not every school district has the pleasure and opportunity and privilege to have students sit on the board. And we're very lucky that you've committed to this, and it helps to hear what you have to say and all of your announcements. So, I just want to thank you and wish you well next year, whatever you're doing. See you on graduation.
Thank you very much.
It's been great being here, Julie. It's been a great time.
It's been a pleasure.
Once they found out where we were meeting and when we were meeting, remember at the beginning, it was a lot of fun, right?
Yeah, that was, that was.
At the beginning, it was a little rocky, but it smoothed it out.
Okay, well, some of us will see you, I guess, at graduation that evening.
To your.
Thanks again for everything. I don't know, we have a meeting on the 18th. I don't know if the student rep, you would come to that, but...
We'd love to have you.
Oh, we'd love to come to.
We will have some recognition for you.
Yes.
We'd love to have you here on the 18th.
There will not be a lot to say, but we'll do our best to try to gather whatever stuff.
It'll be at Town Hall.
Okay. I need to go.
Got that one out?
Actually, I went to high school and then realized it's not.
Or come here, and no one be here.
We're gonna meet, next week, we'll meet in Bootland, okay? Walmart yet. Any other comments? Thank you again, gentlemen.
Of course. Thank you.
Dr. Rothar.
Just briefly, this is the most wonderful time of the year, aside from September, when everything is fresh and new, but a lot of celebration going on this time of year, a lot of culminating activities which are wonderful, and I enjoy having the opportunity to participate in as many of them as I can. I was also very honored on Friday to go to Rider University, where two of our schools, Valleyview and Hilldale, were recognized as honorable mention School of Character for the state of New Jersey, and William Mason was recognized as being both a New Jersey and a National School of Character. So, they join the growing ranks of schools of character within the district. It's a very difficult process to earn that recognition, so I'm very proud of the students and teachers at William Mason for earning that designation this year. I want to move into our presentations. We have several this evening to start off with. I would love to turn things over to Mr. Nazak to introduce our Shoprate Stars.
Good evening. Thank you. I'm happy to be here to present our Shoprate Stars for the fourth and final marking period. These stars were nominated by our faculty members in one of five different categories, and the winners were selected by an administrative committee. In addition to the recognition of these wonderful students, Shoprate generously donates $1,000 toward Project Graduation for the class of 2019. Please join me in congratulating each of our stars this evening. In the field of academics, congratulations to Vivian Shudin. When the window opened for students to be nominated for a Shoprate Star this marking period, one teacher applied to my email with just the words "love this student" and then an attachment of all of Vivian's impressive accomplishments. During her time at MTHS, Vivian has demonstrated a passion for learning by continuing to challenge herself in the classroom. For example, during her freshman year, Vivian was enrolled to take four honors-level classes. By her sophomore year, she decided to take a single AP course. Now, on the precipice of graduation, Vivian can proudly say that during her high school career, she has maintained a 4-plus GPA while taking nine AP classes. In addition to her talent in the classroom, Vivian has been an active member of clubs such as their act, Moral Congress, and Earth Club. In the fall, Vivian will attend Bachelor College and major in Environmental Science. Again, congratulations. In the field of athletics, congratulations to Ian Dancet. The staff members who nominated Ian described him using two words: heart and hustle. Ian was instrumental in the success of the boys' tennis team precisely because of his work ethic, passion, and determination. Off the court, Ian is an active participant in FPLA and DECA, where he has competed at the regional and state levels. In addition, Ian enjoys giving back to the community in his volunteer places such as the Los Angeles Food Bank while he was on vacation. Ian also spent summers as a camp counselor at Camp Winnedoo in Massachusetts, where he is looked up to as a big brother and a role model. In the fall, Ian will attend Indiana University and major in finance. Again, congratulations. In the field of the arts, congratulations to Julia Mussey. If you've attended a concert choir, Broadway night, or musical in the past four years, then you know Julia well. She is a talented singer, aspiring actor, and outside of MTHS, a member of an AKA public group. Her impact on our music department has been far-reaching, and because of her work and talent, one of Julia's proudest accomplishments has been her acceptance into tri and. In addition, Julia is an active member of Make-A-Wish, DECA, and Girl Scouts, where she has recently achieved a Silver Award. When Julia is not performing or participating in club activities, she works year-round as a lifeguard at a local YMCA. After graduating, Julia will attend Peach University and major in Arts and Entertainment Management. Again, congratulations. In the field of community service, congratulations to Jacqueline Monaco. Jacqueline couldn't be here this evening because she's attending a softball banquet, but I wanted to introduce her and share some of her accomplishments anyway. Jacqueline's desire to give back extends to causes and organizations throughout our community and beyond. Jacqueline has generously given her time to volunteer at places such as Chilton Hospital, Make-A-Wish, St. Jude's, CCD at St. Thomas Moore, and on the Challenger Softball Team in Clinton, where she works with students who have special needs. This work was recognized in part by the Girl Scouts, who recognized Jacqueline with a Silver Award. When she's not getting back to the community, Jacqueline is getting back to her peers through NHS and to her softball teammates through her captainship and arm field talent. For example, Jacqueline has achieved first-team all-conference during two of her four years at MTHS. Jacqueline will continue playing softball in the fall for Remah, where she will major in Biology in the pre-physical therapy program. Congratulations to Jacqueline. In the field of leadership, congratulations to Jessica Plank. Jessica is an outstanding young woman who inspires everyone around her to be better. During her four years at MTHS, Jessica has been involved with many clubs and organizations and each she's been on here. For example, last year, Jessica was selected to be the Student Assistant Director and Choreographer for the musical The Twenty-Fifth Annual Puppets Family. In addition, Jessica is the Public Relations Officer and Vice President of Business for the Drama Club. She is also the Public Relations Officer for the class of 2019 and remains an active member of National Honor Society, Spanish Honor Society, Make-A-Wish, International Concerns Club, History Club, and Earth Club. After graduation, Jessica will attend the University of Maryland and major in Public Policy. Again, congratulations to Jessica, to all of our fourth marking period Shoprate Stars, and to each of the 25 seniors who have been recognized this year with the song.
I would now like to turn things over to Charlene Peterson, who is our field representative through the New Jersey School Boards Association. Charlene has a presentation to make, and then Charlene will be facilitating the board's work this evening on setting goals for the 2019-20 school year. I have a clicker for you. I apologize for the fact that our screen is over here. Obviously, this is not our usual location for the meeting. We had planned to have our meeting in town. This evening, unfortunately, due to the fact that it's Election Day, and they have a polling place at the Musical Building, we were not able to be there. This is a far more comfortable spot than the cafeteria, so we're here. But for Charlene's presentation, you're gonna have to turn your head to the left. Do I need to use the microphone or not? Are you recording this or...? Are we recording, Mark?
Oh, yeah.
All right, so yes, Charlene, if you could.
Mark, can you give her a handle?
Is it on, Mark? No, yes, no?
Yeah, it works.
I'll just turn it up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I gave you the clicker.
I got it. I gave it to Charlene, she's got it. Got it. So, appropriate with having a meeting to talk about celebrations, we not only can talk about the accomplishments of our students, the accomplishments of our staff, but also have the pleasure tonight to talk about the accomplishments of our board members. We too can participate in training and earn awards and certifications, and, you know, it helps recognize that there is, you know, more to learning than just the work that you do inside the four walls of your board room, but basically, you know, provide the opportunity to get out and network and talk with other board members, to go to county meetings, to go to all kinds of trainings, you know, bringing that work back here to your board. So, tonight, I have the pleasure of making the board aware of one of the accomplishments of one of your members. So, it is your board president, Charlie, who accomplished the level of Master Board Member. And from New Jersey School Board's perspective, we have four levels of certifications that board members can earn, and this is the third highest one. So, just wanted to make you aware of what the requirements are to earn that certification. So, as a board member, you get training for different classes that New Jersey School Boards offers. So, to be a Master Board Member, you have to earn 40 credits. I said it's important that you go to county meetings and network with other board members. So, we require attendance at at least eight county meetings. To go to New Jersey School Boards Delegates Assembly, where you kind of learn how our operation works, so we require that you attend two of those. To go to our annual workshop in Atlantic City. And then also attend statewide or regional trainings. We require three of those. Have to not be in violation of any of the Code of Ethics. And then also have to take an exam, which a lot of us haven't done in a long time, right? So, have to have passed all of that in order then to be eligible to receive this award. So, at the Morris County meeting that was in May, this was where the award was formally presented. So, it was Charlie with a Persephone Board Member and a Jefferson Board Member, and Karen is there participating in the picture. But it is my pleasure to give Charlie, or to formally present the plaque that he received for being a Master Board Member. And not only did he receive this plaque, but also this handy carry case that came along.
Keep the plaque, keep the plaque off to the carry. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We're not done yet. Charlie's claim to fame that night is not over yet. Also wanted to make you aware that we also give out awards for service to your community, service to your board. And so Charlie was recognized for providing 25 years of service to the Montville Township Board. So, again, received a plaque and a pin for that, recognizing that important milestone in his board.
Thank you again.
Now, give your bag back, Castle.
Thank you very much, Charlene.
It is my pleasure.
Thank you, Karen. She was involved in this when I got started with her on the Board of Education. And Karen, as you know, is now a big deal, a big officer in the State Association. And I would just like to thank my colleagues. I know some of you have been going to meetings, and I appreciate it because it comes back. We share that information, and it just makes us a better cohesive group to work with, and especially with our outstanding administration we have here. And Charlene, thank you so much for all of your help.
It is my pleasure. So, the last piece of this was a final goodbye that Karen was recognized as well for all of the work that she did for the Morris County School Board Association. And she was presented with the certificate, but they said she scooted away too quickly to get a picture of you with the certificate. Yes, I'm just shy. So, this was the new president, recognizing or thanking the outgoing president for all of the work that she did and the many contributions. You know, Morris County School Board Association is often looked to from other associations to look at the good work and the good things that are happening there and use as an example for other associations to follow, and most of that is attributed to all the work that, you know, they've carried led the group through. So, we appreciate the fact that your board members are making a contribution, you know, beyond even just your own district, but throughout the whole county, so greatly appreciate it. Okay, I think that's... So, part of the work that we were going to do tonight was to talk about board goals. So, I set on each one of your places the goals that we set for last year. So, to help kind of explain what we mean by this, when we talk about board goals, these are things that you, as a board, would like to work on to help further develop your governance process. So, you know, as much as we have different kinds of goals in the district, what separates these goals is that all of the work to accomplish them has to be the work of the board, so all of the steps, all of the work. So, what are things that you would like to focus on to help further your work? So, last year, we identified four goals, and one of them I can see, like goal number one, I mean, goal number four was a multi-year goal. If we look at it, it talked about negotiating contracts, and you have through, you know, July 1, 2018 through July 30, 2021. So, as a board, you may want to continue to leave that on there as a goal, you know, recognizing that it was a multi-year goal. I'm gonna grab my yellow sheet here, too, because we'll record ideas and, you know, record any other thoughts or areas that the board might want to focus on for goals. So, I want you to look at the board that we did last year and then decide which ones we want to keep, which ones have been accomplished, which ones might be new ones then that we need to focus on instead. Come up with a plan then for this year moving forward. So, any thoughts from the board about either goals from last year's goals that you feel need to be repeated again for next year, or any other goals that you think the board should be focusing on?
Goal number one, we're in the second year of the building referendum project, Charlie. Okay, so we would have to continue with that, I would think, for the 1920 school year.
Everybody in agreement with that? Okay. Um, I'm sorry. Goal number three could be expanded now that our district website is almost, our new district website is almost launched. Okay. So, how would you like to expand it then? Add the word "new" in front of district. Okay. Okay? Anyone else?
I know the scheduling for the middle school is a multi-year also. We suppose we get an information probably November, December, January, somewhere in that range. I think that would be a goal this year.
But that was a district goal this year. So, if there's anything the board could do to support it, or if you want to forget it and just leave it as a district?
Doesn't matter.
Number four, we actually did accomplish, because that was to negotiate new agreements for all of, all of our contracts are on the same cycle. Okay. Oh, my goodness. So, we did, last year, we got that all accomplished, actually floated into the beginning part of this year, but so we were actually done with contracts until... Okay, good. They expire in 2000, or, yeah, 2021.
Did Karen mention goal three should be repeated?
Yes. Yes. Okay. As you look at the wording in the second goal, is there anything in that one that can be extended, or has that one been accomplished? Can you read it, because the audience doesn't know what you're talking about? Sure. Goal number two was curriculum revision as needed to ensure compliance with the New Jersey Student Learning Standards. Will be led by the Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum and Instruction and the Supervisors in preparation for CUSAC monitoring during the 2018-19 school year. Staff development in 2018-19 will be focused on those areas identified through the ESSA Grant Application Needs Assessment. So, as a district, then you have been on it, you have... We did, we still haven't gotten the final report. Oh, okay. We do believe that we successfully completed all the curriculum prospects of that. Good. Okay, is there anything else then, as a board, as you think about the work that you're doing, as you think about things that you would like to focus on to move your, you know, to move yourselves forward, is there anything else that comes to mind? I mean, there's nothing wrong with having just two goals if you feel like these two, you know, one of the things, you know, we have been working on certification. You can look at the requirements that I, you know, I have written down here, what we have accomplished so far at the bottom, and what we still have left to do for certification. So, you know, one of the things the board has, so the board can commit to some training, like, you know, some boards will say, we're gonna commit to two trainings a year, or three, you know, whatever, to help move the board forward, to continue on the path for its certification.
Just to digress, Charlene, so once we submit our, one of our labor relation contracts...
We've done that. Okay. I can, I can give you that. We did it for the last go-around of negotiations, so I have that.
How about the self-evaluation?
We have, we have not done that. Maybe that's a goal. That could be a goal as well. Complete that this year.
Complete the board's self-evaluation. MLB all, all set.
And the six and a half credits is what we need, or we may need seven and a half credits? You may need seven and a half. And so that's one hour with you? So, that must be for tonight? So, you'll get, you know, credits for tonight? So, we're down to five and a half.
Keep going, you're losing.
So, we have four years.
What are you doing though, Charlene?
Why do we have to complete this by? So, it's, it's a four-year cycle, and so credits are good for four years. So, after four years, they drop off. So, you, as a board, would decide when you want to, you know, complete the process. Like you said, you will recognize that you'll lose, you know, one credit in 2016 if we don't finish by the end of this year. So, is it, I mean, I would have to defer to Dr. Rothar, but is it too ambitious to try and do six credits in a year? Yes. Yes. Okay. Well, I mean, it's, some boards have done it. The goal, it's set up to accomplish this over a four-year period, which would be four classes. And this is our second year? This is, I mean, you've got credits from 2017, 2016, 2017, so you've got credits each one of the years. But this is only kind of these past couple of years is when you've really been focusing on it. It has to be concerted effort, right?
So, if we wanted to do it over the next two years, we would need X credits per year to get to that 16, I think.
I think like a three and three, or four and three, whatever we need. I think that should be our goal, to complete it in the next two years. Okay. So, to, so to complete word certification in the next two years? Yeah.
Start losing too many, definitely.
Right, and then... Okay, so we have down that we are going to continue the first goal, and I'll read that, which is the board will support the administrative team as they manage the referendum construction.
We'll change the years.
Yeah, we'll. Then the third goal was the board will expand in celebration of student achievement and accomplishments through presentations at board meetings and via the dissemination of information through the new district website and social media. And then we said that we are going to add as a goal to complete a board self-evaluation, and then add another goal to complete the board certification in the next two years. Okay, so does that sound good for everyone?
Sounds like a plan.
Okay. Well, we just, just like per to doing this tonight, started accomplishing one of them just by the work that we're doing here, so. So I will type this up and get it back to you. And, you know, as a board, I appreciate the work that you're doing and appreciate, you know, that this work will help, you know, continue to move you forward, so thank you very much.
Thank you again, Charlene, for all of your help in holding our hand through this process. And thank you for your assistance with the evaluation. And enjoy your time in Ireland, okay?
Thank you.
Okay. Renee, do you have any others from your...
I am done.
It's on the district website.
Okay, there's not a lot of things on the good news and types of numbers, but there's some very important events that have occurred in our schools, so please, it will be easier to read that over. We have business administrative reports, the team?
We are moving forward into the summer construction projects. Construction on the bathrooms, media centers, and gymnasiums at Hilldale, Valley View, and Woodmont are underway. The plan is that on the 21st of June, we will begin to do the demolition work in those three areas. We will also be, over this summer, instituting air conditioning in all academic spaces district-wide. Our work on HVAC controls to bring all of the business management systems up and running will be concluded this summer. And then we have some varying projects such as the windows in the main gym that'll be replaced. We'll be doing some work on the gym floor, both in this building as well as at the high school, and then completing the sound reduction work that needs to be done in a number of the gymnasiums.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Slund. Next opportunity to public participation, I see we have four, three? Three individuals, three very important individuals. Any questions from any at this point? Okay, let's move into agenda. I'll entertain a motion on the consent agenda.
Do you want committee reports?
Committee reports. Nah, well, yeah, I forgot the committee reports. I saw the word public, I said, "That's good." Committee reports, finance and facilities, Karen?
I think the committee met earlier this evening and basically, Mrs. Slund gave an update of what we discussed, the summer projects were high on the list, closing out last year's projects and opening up this year's project. So we all look forward to the completion of the referendum by next year.
Thank you. Curriculum, Mr. Palmer?
We met tonight also and really discussed three things. One was summer reading at both Lazar and the high school. One was the communications course at Lazar in order to try to flush it in with the Lazar Network News program, which is hopefully gonna run more frequently next year. And we discussed some LOLD curriculum.
Thank you. Policy and personal, I don't think they have met. Mr. Rell is not here this evening. Communications, Karen?
Yes, thank you. We haven't met, but Dr. Rotar put out an update to the communications committee last week. And basically, the new website is under construction. It's moving along. Training of the principals and building webmasters is ongoing. Plans are to move over to the new website soon, if not this month, then over the summer. There was also some information about school, school alud? How do you say that?
Schoology.
Schoology, thank you. And it's a, the Schoology is a learning management system and it will replace the teacher pages, not all at once, so no one panic. But over time, it will replace the teacher pages. And it, it's multifaceted and will provide a lot of opportunities for communication between students, staff, and home. And that's for, that's it for communications.
Thank you, Karen. Safety and security, I don't believe they have met. Ad hoc committee, no ad hoc committees. Delegates, school boards, Karen?
So on May 16th, I attended the annual New Jersey PTA, New Jersey School Board Association Legislative Day. And it's an opportunity for legislators to speak in front of a crowd of school board members and PTA members. It was basically divided into two sessions. The first session was a panel discussion among various legislators, Assemblywoman Lampit, Assemblywoman Myla Jaycee, Assemblywoman Serena Damasi, and Senator Gopel. They were asked a series of questions on topics ranging from school, the school funding formula, to special education costs, assessments, school security and mental health, and consolidation and regionalization. And they took questions from the audience as well. The next panel discussion were representatives or government relations personnel from a variety of associations, the New Jersey Association of Counties, the NJEA, the NJSBA, the PSA, the Garden State Coalition, and the New Jersey PTA. And questions were posed to them regarding the work of advocacy, grassroots, how do you speak to your legislator, how important is it to develop relationships with the legislative staff of various legislators, and how to advocate in today's political environment. And then we had a talk from a young man from an NGO that was speaking to us about the importance of the upcoming census and how we can all participate. And if anyone's interested, I have some information about that. On May 18th, I attended the twice-a-year delegate assembly from New Jersey School Boards Association. At this meeting, new officers were sworn in. The new president is Michael McClure from Maple Shade Board of Education in Burlington. The new vice president for county activities is Bruce Young from Carlstadt East Rutherford in Bergen County. The new vice president for finance is Tammy Smith from Nolton Town Board of Education in Warren. And the new vice president for legislation and resolutions is me from Montville Township here in Morris. There was only one resolution on the agenda for the body to consider. It was a resolution that had to do with funding. And it was a little contentious, the resolution failed, but it will probably be resurrected for the next delegate assembly. And I think that, that completes my report for NJSBA.
Thank you, Karen. Now that we have one of our own, we will expect special service from the school board.
You got it.
Morris County, Michael?
We had our meeting, our last meeting of the year, May 23rd, and we heard from Charlene to reenact her tonight of the presentations that were made, and so I guess we'll be meeting again in the fall. I made a personal point, oh, the food at the location where they have it, the mansion, called the mansion, right? Is that the name? Whatever it was.
Yes, the mansion outline.
Very good. The food is very good. The seating is horrible. So I brought to the attention of the Morris County, of the state representatives, how bad that is. And I personally modeled for them how to liberate furniture from the bar area and how to utilize it in the meetings. And they said they would, moving forward, do something about the seating. And for sitting for two and a half hours in those chairs is painful. Okay, so I think they will do something about it in the future. Okay, so I look forward to that next meeting in September.
Michael did procure some easier, easy chairs, and I don't know if he'll be invited back, but hopefully we'll all get an easy chair in the future.
Mike, I carry in my trunk seating pads, so if you need, just...
Maybe, maybe he'll be suspended like a chipmunk.
It's not just, it's the size of the seat, too.
We better end it at that. Mike, Palmer, drug awareness?
We have a meeting next... No? Is that on that? Okay, we have a meeting, well, I'm sorry, we have a meeting next week. Last time I talked about the fact that we were trying to pencil in a Lazar dance for this coming Friday, unfortunately it fell through. We just couldn't coordinate it, so we're gonna be looking forward to hopefully doing it sometime next year. We are going forward with selling tickets for the project graduation cruise. My understanding is that email blast either is going out or has gone out recently, and in fact, there may be more than one email blast, so we're hoping that there, there'll be a good turnout. It's gonna be a cruise, it's gonna leave, I believe, Regalcan, and the first time we've tried something like this, and hopefully everyone has a good time.
Thank you, Mike. Mustangs, the other Mike?
They don't meet again until September.
Okay. Any PTCs? We'll start with Cedar Hill.
They're having their last meeting tomorrow night. It's a celebration, and they're having it at a restaurant in, a local restaurant at seven o'clock, so I'll be attending.
Okay. Dave, Hilldale?
Yeah, they're having their talent show next week, which is always a lot of fun. I don't know if the other schools do talent shows, but the Hilldale talent show is a very, very popular event at the school each year. All the kids get up there and they show what they can do, and they have a real blast with it. And of course, you're getting ready for the end of school year parties.
When's the date, Karen, Dave?
It's on the 13th.
Thank you. How about Valley View, Joe?
They had a meeting on May 15th, and I was, I attended that meeting. They're not doing their fun fair, which we do at the end of school year, they're doing a fall fun fair-type festival. So they're in the process of planning that out, and the next meeting is June 12th.
Thank you. Mr. Palmer, would not?
They met actually, I just turned it off. On that, okay, yeah, they had a meeting last week, I was unable to attend because it conflicted with the farewell party for the confidential secretary, the superintendent, Patty Drobisch, who we owe a great deal of gratitude towards, which will be missed very much. I did get to attend a few events at Woodmont the last couple of weeks, including the trips, the spring concert, and the fun fair.
Lazar, Michelle?
Last time when we met, it was right before the Living Lessons program, and that, you know, occurred, and it was, as usual, wonderful program for all involved. The students, you know, really do always talk about it as being just an unbelievable memory from their time in the district, not just in Lazar. So just a shout out to Judy Got Health and Derek Lynn for always, you know, spearheading that so well. And there's just a lot of fun year-end activities, a lot for the parade, the field trip, and Field Day, of course, promotion coming up, and the PTC is happy to be sponsoring a fun year-end cultural arts assembly with the Hoop Wizard next week, so only good things.
Have that promotion in a nice new air-conditioned gym at the high school. Air-conditioned, but ship Melissa with that. I stole...
I have no report, but I didn't want to ask, at the graduation, that steps off, that steps off at six, we're supposed to be there, or be four, six?
One is at seven, one's at six.
Lazar's at six.
Lazar's at six, but high school later.
Seven.
Yes, but we usually like people there by six so that you can get robed and lined up before the procession. Yeah. But you typically get information from the high school when they, they'll finalize the directions and they will send that out, so. Actually, in the package that you gave us, that you left at our seats, there's the invitation from Lazar for the...
I know Lazar's...
But for the high school, we usually get information, more explicit directions, and then we'll send that out to you.
All right, thank you.
And parking passes, Chris?
And parking passes.
Parking passes will be handed out on the 18th board meeting.
And I made the...
On the 18th.
And Mike, did you want to make any special arrangements for a soft chair?
I think it's BYOC.
No questions from the citizens, motion on the agenda, please, by...
Just wait, 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 Charlene.
Wait, wait, wait.
If you don't mind, under additional reports, can I give two additional reports?
Are you talking to resolution?
No, I'm talking to additional reports.
Additional committee reports?
So on Saturday, I'm sure all of you know, there was a Greater Montville Relay for Life event that was held in the high school field. And it was a tremendous success. We had beautiful weather and wonderful participation. It was a very heartwarming and moving ceremony throughout the day. Teams were formed, the Board of Education formed a team, and I am very proud to say that the Montville Township Board of Education was recognized for being the third top fundraising team. So we should all give ourselves a round of applause because that was a terrific accomplishment.
We were only third, but we were the best.
Well, I think there were, I guess, up to about 20 teams that formed, so coming in third, I think, is very good.
I think it was the coaching of our team. I think our coach, Karen, was a great coach for us.
I strong-armed all of you. And the other thing I wanted to report on was last night, I attended the Seventh Annual Science Research Symposium. And once again, the students, using a phrase from a retired kindergarten teacher, knocked our socks off. The students were just completely amazing. They present their work that they've worked on for, since their sophomore year, it's original work, it's new discoveries. They present it to us like we are the scientists that they're presenting their paper to. They're extraordinarily knowledgeable, poised, articulate. Ms. Finn and Dr. Brinkman do a wonderful job. The program is not only doing well, but thriving. I saw Dr. Schwartz at the event, and she told me that it is now easier for students to find mentors. It's, it's been a stumbling block over the years for the students to find professors at universities who are actually willing to let high school students enter their labs to perform original research. But it's getting easier for our students because the program and our students are developing a reputation. The program provides fantastic opportunities for our students. One of our students gave her talk about a particular discovery that multiple graphene flakes in contact with a water droplet will repel the drop and self-assemble into layers. Now, I know that that doesn't sound like much, but that discovery was brand new. No one had discovered that before, and here, our high school student working in this lab discovered it. Having recently attended, and it sounds like I'm making a left turn here, but I'm not, having recently... I'm not, having recently attended Paul Freed's unveiling ceremony, he died a year ago, during the entire program of the Original Science Research Program, a program that he brought to the district, I kept thinking, what a wonderful legacy that Paul has left us, and after the program, I actually called Paul's wife, and we spent a, I sent my car for about 20 minutes, she and I talking and crying. But anyway, it was another successful year for the Original Science Research Program, so I wanted to give them a big shout out.
I think that's a real tribute to the school, a program like that, it really is impressive.
I don't know how often our students attend MIT, I know we send our schools, our students to all sorts of Ivy League schools, but one of the students who presented last night is going on MIT, so that's, that's a big accomplishment.
Okay, can we now entertain a motion on the agenda? Second. Any questions on J, the minutes, J, K, L?
L is personnel, correct?
Which one, Karen?
L is personnel?
Personnel, L.
Yes. I, I just wanted to note the retirement of Sarah Lawler. Sarah's been an English teacher for a very long time, and while my children have never had her as a teacher, her reputation precedes her, I, she's, her reputation is that she's a wonderful teacher, she's a wonderful human being, and while we're certainly happy she's retiring, and wish her all a long and healthy retirement, we shall definitely be missed. I know she recently, over the past three or four years, achieved her doctoral degree, so I hope that she continues to enrich the lives of students, perhaps teaching at a college level, so, thank you, Mrs. Dr. Lawler.
Echoes your comment, anybody who's been here for 20 years in the high school English deserves our well-appreciated thanks.
Always been a great asset to the staff.
Anything else on L? M? I don't think there's any N, is there?
No, no.
No N? Roll call, please, Mrs. Slunt?
Ms. Zuckerman?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Aye.
Dr. Cortalina?
Yes.
Mr. Doddtree?
Yes, abstinent, section I.
Dr. Mudra?
Yes.
Mr. Rappaport?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Graff?
Yes.
There's no need to go into closed work session. Do we have any old business? General board comment, other than the meeting on June 18th at 6:30, 5:30 for the finance and the town hall? Public participation, anybody? We're going to entertain a motion to adjourn, please.
Motion.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you very much.